I know, Shube used to sit over there.
Matt and Flurk?
Yeah.
He said what they said I did.
Yes.
I didn't realize.
How do we do it?
I know, I gotta think about it. Mr. Carrion? They said we need to do that. Right there at the mic.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
I'd like to call tonight's meeting to order. We are assembled here today for the City of Oxford Board of Commissioners' regular monthly meeting. It is Tuesday, March 12th, 2019, and 7:00 PM, and we are assembled here in the Commissioners' Boardroom of City Hall. And, the vision of our city is that we will partner with the community to build upon the charm and character our historic, vibrant, and walkable city, to create an extraordinary quality of life for all. That, I would like to ask you, anybody here, to turn off or mute your electronic devices, and invite Reverend Cam Cord of New Horizons Baptist Church to come forward and open our meeting in prayer.
Let us pray. Dear Heavenly Father, not too terribly long ago, there was a saying going around. We could find it sometimes on our bumper stickers or on our T-shirts, that said, "I like calling North Carolina home." Well, I'd like to be a little bit more specific, and say, "I like calling Oxford, North Carolina, home." And I'm very honored, very honored and very privileged to have been asked to be here tonight to offer this prayer, on behalf of the Commissioners and on behalf of the city itself. I love calling Oxford home. I love calling this county home. It's where I've called home for the greater part of my life, and it's nowhere in this world I would rather call home. Tonight, Lord, I would like to pray for your peace and your strength to be upon each and every member of the leadership here. And I would like to pray that you grant them your wisdom to do what best needs to be done in every decision they make, not only tonight, but every time they have to make a decision, Lord, may it be in accordance with thy will. And I pray, Lord, for this city as a whole. I honestly believe that you have this city in the palm of your hand. I believe that it has been blessed throughout the years and throughout the generations. And I pray that it will continue to be. And for that, I'm grateful. So, Lord, again, I just thank you that I can be here tonight to offer this prayer. And with that, I just simply say, amen.
Amen.
Thank you, Reverend. I hope that reached everybody as much as it did you. Thank you so much for being here tonight. With that, on your time, we'll lead us into the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much, Reverend. At this time, we'll consider any adjustments to or end approval of the agenda. With the pleasure of the board.
Motion.
Motion by Commissioner Woodliffe. Any discussion? All in favor of approving the agenda as written before us? Signal so by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Like sign. That motion carries. In order to provide for the highest standards of behavior and transparency in governance, our Board of Commissioners has approved a Code of Ethics to establish the guidelines for ethical standards for ourselves and to provide guidance in determining appropriate conduct. Among those, that we should avoid impropriety in the exercise of our official duties and should conduct the affairs of the board in an open and public manner. I now inquire whether any board member knows of any conflict of interest or appearance of such with respect to any matters before the board tonight. If any board member does know of a conflict of interest or appearance of such, please state so at this time. Okay, let the record so note, no conflict. And with that, I would like to invite Chris and Amanda Welsh from Frye H&amp;Z, the new management at the Oxford-Henderson Airport, to come forward to the podium and give us an update on the plans for the airport. And thank you for being here.
Ah, yes, thank you to the board. Thank you for having us this evening. My name is Amanda. Excuse me, my husband, Chris Welsh. We've been appointed to manage the Oxford-Henderson Airport here. As you may know, the previous airport manager died last January, and this past October 15th, we started our management of the airport. So, we've been, you know, vibrantly and working real hard to try to make the airport everything it can be. We've got a great facility out there, and we're even making it better. We just finished a project getting a new LED light upgrade to the runway so that they can be more efficient and brighter for pilots, increasing safety. We've got a new apron area for parking, and we've got some more projects underway. We've got additional taxiway movement project and some hangar building projects, all done with, you know, the mostly federal and state monies there, grants there, so that we can better the airport for the community. We have filled our hangars. Our airport's at capacity, which is great. We're getting, you know, everybody out there flying. Recently, we have rolled out leases and new rules for the airport so that everybody's on the same page there. That's something that all airports across North Carolina have been working hard to do, and we're on the forefront of that. These smaller airports have often been handshake agreements, so we're bringing that into, you know, compliance here with 2019 and the paperwork era that we're in, you know. And we've just seen a lot of traffic increase at the airport since we've been in. We've had some great events. You may have seen the Military History Show we had in October. It was a great show. Hope, I'd like to invite all of you out next year. It'll be, I think, the fourth annual one this upcoming year. That's a great community involvement there. So, it's one of our biggest community involvements of the year so far. We've had a couple articles in the paper, both Henderson area and this area, which have been great, just letting people know, hey, there's an airport out here, you know? That airport road, yep, it does dead-end into an airport after all. We have been working hard, taking continuing education classes. We're slated to become a better licensed, and there's an aircraft professional designation that we're working hard towards with the DOA, Division of Aviation, DOT. And we've been participating with Harry Mills, who I just noticed his office is right next door there, trying to get, you know, the airport on the map for businesses and industry in the area for, you know, increased economic development, increased big jets coming through, which we've seen already some increases. A couple of our really exciting upcoming projects are, of course, the hangar building there and the taxiway increase. That hangar will be able to house, we're gonna make it bigger so a couple of larger, of the newer style of airplane can come. And, you know, with newer, nicer airplanes comes people who more often fly them and some increased activity there. It's always great. And, you know, more compliance with our taxiway, being in better shape as well as some FAA, you know, compliance there, bringing it up to the newest standards. And then, one of our most exciting new events for the community here, it's gonna become our hopefully biggest outreach, is we're having what's called a Young Eagles Rally. And that is going to be on April 27th. That is an event that participates, a local club puts that on. It's a national organization, local chapter. They're coming to our airport to give free airport rides to kids age eight to eighteen. All that's required is a parent's signature on a little piece, just a little paperwork. And it's a really great involvement to say, hey, kids, this is something that's actually attainable. And this is something that you can come out and watch us here at the airport. It's a really, really fun event. So, hopefully, we have a lot of participation there. We've reached out to the Boys and Girls Clubs and some other of the local children-based organizations to get that going. And then, we're just starting some pilot groups and associations there as well. Hopefully, we'll have a chapter of that national organization called EAA Experimental Aircraft Association. That's details, but we're getting a pilot's, pilot's chapter together here. And looking forward to growing and coming back next year and giving some more official members after we've had our first full year. Does anybody on the board have any questions or anything that we can answer for you? We just really wanted to say hi this afternoon, this evening, and put that in front of you.
How, what was the date for the Young Eagles Rally?
That is on April 27th.
Weather permitting?
Weather permitting. And the time is, it'll be starting at 10 to 3. I can send somebody on the board the information. It's, registration is not required online, registration is not required, but it is encouraged. And also, online, parents can fill out that form and send it in if they're not gonna be there with their kids, that's okay. Or they can come with their kid and fill the form out.
Thank you.
Are you gonna be putting information about that in the paper?
Yes, yes. That'll be run here in the next couple of weeks, and then it'll be in the little side column, like, for the entire month of April, I think.
Other questions from?
You, you mentioned something about larger planes would be able to land if you increase the size of the hangar?
Yes.
And I wanted to know, what is the largest size plane that airport can?
Um, we can, we've had Gulfstream G650.
Okay, how many people?
Like a 14-passenger jet.
14-passenger, okay.
Yeah. It's a business jet.
You know, the hangar increase allows for larger aircraft to be based at the airport. Those airplanes can come in and land, but there's nowhere to park for them inside.
Just due to wing space. There's some newer aircraft who have a larger, wider wing, and so we'll be able to accommodate some of those. There's, there's just a couple of new ones that have come out recently. It's kind of pedantic there, but it's, it's just good to know that, that we're getting, you know, space for the more up-to-date, like, upgraded, new airplanes 'cause, 'cause there are some new ones that have just come out with a wider wingspan that need extra space.
Are y'all having any contact with the federal prison to, to get? 'Cause at one time, we had a contract where when they were transporting prisoners into the prison camp, we could accommodate that, and that was the source of income, right?
Yes, that was a, a flight that we did have before we came in, and we're getting in contact with those people as well. There was an incident there and some, some different reasons why they have now moved to Person County at this time.
But, but it's a Granville County prison.
But, yes, yes. So, we are working on that.
We should have that contract, right?
Yeah. It, it does, it does cost them more to have to ground transport prisoners further, so.
Okay.
How many, you mentioned, the hangars that Commissioner Bridges asked about, how many new ones are you building?
Um, the plans are still under review with the DOT. So, it will be one row of hangars, and depending on how they function that, it could be 10 to 14.
Okay.
But, the, sorry, the exact plans are, you know, the, the actual drawings are, are under review, so we haven't gotten the official number yet.
Thank you. And you mentioned that you're filled up in what we already have?
Yes.
So, I'm assuming that's with some new planes coming up and setting up shop at our airport. Where are they coming from?
Horace Williams Airport was in Chapel Hill, right next to the school, the Chapel Hill School, and actually was owned by the Chapel Hill School. Last March, that was shut down. That airport was just totally decommissioned. And so, that kind of put a ripple effect into the hangar environment of this area. The, kind of the Raleigh, larger metro, Wake, larger metro, you know, middle Piedmont, kind of larger metro hangar area. So, we got some planes directly from them. We got some planes, you know, kind of domino affecting from there, and that's still kind of sorting itself out. Most, all airports in the whole, just middle Piedmont area, especially the northern and central Piedmont area, are actually full.
With a waitlist.
With a waitlist. And we are as well, full with a waitlist of, of people waiting to base airplanes at our facility. So, we're really excited 'cause not everybody is building hangars, but we're, you know, on the forefront there.
We're trying to get out and have that.
And like I said, our project is under review right now, so we'll have it out hopefully next week of the, you know, review certification process.
So, what would you imagine would be the timeline for those hangars?
They'd like to actually have them by August of this year. So, I'm hoping, you know, construction, what it is, I'm hoping by the end of the year, realistically, we'll have that.
Okay, Commissioner Woodliffe.
Amanda, could you share with the board your relationship with the pilots we have anchored out there now?
Sure, yeah. The pilots that have been anchored out there right now, the previous manager, you know, had, had been there for a good while, and upon his death especially, you know, everybody had, there was a time period between January and October where nobody was, you know, able to man the board and, and be there for, for pilots, you know, help pump your fuel. There's problems here. Oh, yeah, we can do maintenance on your airplane. Absolutely. Oh, let me look at that. So, everybody has been really thrilled that we've been able to come in. We're communicating with them, hey, this is the outage for this, you know, this week because of the, you know, here's an email that says, this is what's out this week because of the construction. Or, hey, our construction's done. Or, hey, you know, we're just communicating. We have open communication with both the board, of which your Commissioner Woodliffe is on, and the pilots. So, they, I've, we've had a lot of good feedback from the pilots right over there. Thank you.
I was actually gonna ask something similar, which is what, what's been your feeling for folks coming up from Horace Williams Airport? Do you, you get the sense they're feeling like this is a good spot to stick with?
Yes, a lot of people actually live fairly close, you know, and this is a very convenient place for them anyway, compared to Horace Williams and, and surrounding airports. And we've had people in from Shiloh, which is way, like, 200 miles from here, and we've had people in from, you know, Triangle North in Franklin County, and we've had people in from Sanford. And, you know, especially Sanford, people are coming up if they're kind of on this side of the Raleigh area and don't want to go into RDU, 'cause our airport is a great facility to bypass all of the badges and the security and the whole hassle that it is to go in a big, big airport like that or the personal touch that we have, so.
That's great, yes.
Yep.
Two, Commissioner Bridges?
You know, y'all, y'all seem to be a young couple. And I'm just wondering, where do you come from? You know, what, what, what? What experience have you had? I mean, you seem very knowledgeable.
Absolutely.
But y'all look so young. I'm trying to think, how did we get y'all?
Absolutely. Well, Christopher, my husband, is a graduate of Virginia Tech in aeronautical engineering. My degree's from State, and it's actually unrelated in food science. Great degree for a girl. Um, so, Christopher, when he graduated.
Yeah, so, I, I've worked as an aircraft mechanic with an inspector in Lewisburg for the last six years. And Amanda has worked part-time for basically that entire time with me, and full-time for about a year and a half. And she was, she was in management at a dental office before that. My dad has been flying since he was in college, and I've had my pilot's license now for, like, eight years. And my mother also has her pilot's license, so.
How many planes does your family own?
One at the moment.
Well, two. We have one and his dad has one, but.
We're, we're also into wheeling and dealing.
So, three.
We, we, we're friends with aircraft brokers, so we do help lubricate his business too.
I'm excited about what y'all are doing.
So, yeah, I have a little bit more management background in a different field, and then aviation background, which has been great, so.
I would just like to end with the same, but Amanda has a popcorn machine. Did you come out and have free popcorn?
Please do. I have all the flavors.
I'm sure they love that.
But I, I hope you all see that the board, Oxford-Henderson, Vance, and Granville County made a very good choice with this family. It is a family. It's these two plus his parents. And they belong very well with the, with the people that we have renting. And on weekends now, it's getting up close to 100 drop bys.
It can be, yeah, yeah, absolutely.
And hopefully, every time they land, they buy gas.
Excellent. Any questions from this end?
I'll leave a stack of cards if you'd like. If you have any, anything, I'll just put it right here. That's good.
Thank you.
Thank you guys so much.
Thank you for coming. We appreciate you taking the time. Have a great night. Okay, with that, we'll move forward to the public comment portion of our agenda, and I would like to invite Kathy Burnett to come forward. And when you get to the podium, please, Judge, state your name, your address, and your purpose.
I'm Kathy Burnett. My office is at 145 Williamsborough Street, and I'm talking about the pedestrian crosswalk that links up my side of the street to the courthouse. It is a dangerous place to walk. I understand that a sign was put up about, and in about three days, it had been run over, saying that pedestrians were crossing and to go slowly. So, I'm asking the board to please look back at the crosswalk. The courthouse's only entrance is at the end of the crosswalk. So, from Milano's on one side to the other side, that is the only entrance to the courthouse. And there are many people that use the courthouse, including me. And there are children. There are people with disabilities. And it's very difficult to see where the cars are parked on each side for someone entering the crosswalk, especially if they're in a wheelchair or a stroller. And I know that there have been efforts, again, the sign, but there are two intersections before you get to that crosswalk. There's the Gilliam Street, Williamsborough, and then there's the Main Street, Williamsborough. And I don't know whether you can put signs on those lights saying, "Watch for pedestrians." But coming down the hill, no one goes 20 miles an hour. An alternative is to let the police ticket them, but that's a poor use of our city resources to have the police sit there and write tickets for 20 miles per hour, and then again, not stopping for pedestrians. I would say about two-thirds of the cars do not stop, even when I'm in the crosswalk. So, that's, I'm asking you to consider that and to consider the danger that that crosswalk poses. And again, especially because it's the only entrance to the courthouse. Thank you.
You have any suggestions, Judge? Relative to what you'd like to see?
Just, I'd like them to slow down.
Okay, well.
And you have the 20 miles per hour right there at the CVS on one side, and then I'm not sure exactly where on the other side. But especially coming down the hill, so that'd be coming from, you know, the Main Street down is where they're gonna go the fastest. And a lot of them are commercial vehicles. They're bigger vehicles. They're not cars.
Are you thinking any blinking light in the middle of this?
I don't know if you can put a speed bump. You know, there are the movable speed bumps. You could elevate the pedestrian walkway perhaps. You could paint it a different color, maybe. It's just that I've noticed not very many people stop until you're about in the middle, and then they'll put on brakes.
There, also, if the board were interested in considering it, you can have the very bright yellow highway-approved pedestrian crossing signs where actually the protocol is to have one about 20 feet ahead and then have another. And if you don't do both, do one right at the crosswalk in either direction with an arrow that points down. So, if we wanted to consider that, that would be an option.
And just to tell you a little bit more about it, the courthouse has the register of deeds, it has clerk's office, and it has the DA's office now. And those folks come out of that entrance and a lot of times cross over to the restaurants on the other side. So, it's not just the public going in and the public coming out, but there are people that also work there that have to use that crosswalk. So, thank you very much.
Mayor, we had talked about doing a bulb out up at Williamsborough Street. It could, and we could talk to Mary Yount of downtown PDC about putting bulb outs on both sides so you can come out. If you have a little bit of protection and, and you don't have, don't feel like running for your life from one side to the other.
And a sign could be put there also.
Right.
And there, actually, on College Street, and I don't know if this is an option, but it obviously, clearly, I think we need to have some conversations with DOT because that is a DOT street. But in the pedestrian plan, for College Street, they actually showed an accommodation before you did a permanent curbing, which is very expensive, which actually consisted of flower pots with flowers in them. So, you actually create something that is appealing to look at, and I don't know how they feel about that, but maybe we can.
Well, that's what we're talking about doing on, coming down College and going around to Hillsborough.
Right, okay. Excellent, so.
We're looking.
Thank you very much, Judge. I appreciate it. Okay. Next, I would like to invite Larry Thomas to come forward. And for the record, please state your name, your address, and your purpose.
Larry Thomas, 207 East Front Street in Oxford. And I just wanted to talk about a couple of agenda items and then a couple of other things. When I got my copy of the agenda, I was surprised that the headworks had been out of service at the wastewater treatment plant, had been out of service.
Can you speak up or direct that microphone to the judges there?
The headworks at the wastewater treatment plant had been out of service for six months. Headworks are pretty important to a sewer plant, and with the money, you got 7 million in the bank. You've only spent 39% of your budget for the wastewater treatment plant this year. Seems like you could have come up with 100,000 to fix it and let the insurance follow behind it. So, I think you need to be vigilant on the treatment processes at the plant. I would like to ask when the street resurfacing is going to start. I noticed that y'all have a meeting next week on that. Hopefully, you're not gonna give us bad news and say it's gonna be postponed another six months or a year. I was looking at the water supply report, and it's a 43-year planning horizon. And according to the report, the City of Oxford doesn't reach a population of 10,000 until 2060. That seems a little inaccurate, but maybe it's gonna take us that long. The demand for water only increases at 180,000 gallons a day over that 43-year planning window. And when you get to 2060, you're gonna have an excess of 2.5 million gallons of water a day. And you're investing a considerable amount of money in the expansion of the plant. If your report's right, you really don't need to do that. The other thing is the sidewalk on High Street, you're in the process of replacing some of it. And you cut down two ugly trees. I wish you'd have cut the rest of them, but you got two of them. And I'd just like to see you put at least one pretty tree back. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much, Mr. Thomas. Okay. And lastly, I would like to invite George Foster to come forward. And for the record, once you're at the podium, please state your name, your address, and your purpose.
George Foster, 313 Cherry Street here in Oxford. I want to talk a little bit about derelict buildings. Before I did that, I wanted to mention that as to the pedestrian walkway, you might want to consider pinching the street at that area. That would certainly slow traffic down. Anyway, regarding some derelict buildings, we have, I noticed the last time a demolition ordinance was approved, the building had been 10 years that no taxes had been paid. It seems to me that we could be a little more vigilant about finding these derelict buildings. Right now, we have two, three on College Street. 218, 226, and 411. And I urge the board to look into this and take some kind of action to see what can be done to bring these properties up to scratch. I know that we don't have a, we don't have, I believe, a minimum property ordinance because we're not big enough. And of course, to threaten demolition of these properties, that's also very expensive as well as somewhat destructive. So, anyway, I urge that the board to look into these properties. Again, the addresses are 218, 226, 411, College Street. There are others in town, of course. You know, I walk around town all the time, so I do see them. But these are three that I think we really should take a look at as soon as we can. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And with that, our public comment period is over, and we move forward to our public hearing section. And item five is a public hearing to receive citizen input on amending the zoning ordinance to include the definition of a craft.
to include the definition of a craft distillery and amend the table of permitted uses to allow a craft distillery in the B-one zoning district. And you have support information, uh, in your, um, agenda packet under item five. And the letter that was written in the application, as well as the recommended definition. And, uh, for the purposes, for the audience, I'll read that definition. A craft distillery is a facility where liquor is manufactured, stored, bottled, and sold in sealed containers at wholesale. Such facilities would produce less than twenty-five thousand gallons of liquor annually. Such a distillery may include onsite retail sales for consumption off premises or on premises. A distiller would need to obtain a federal basic permit through the Alcohol and Tobacco Tax and Trade Bureau. A distiller also would need a state distiller's permit. And with that, I will declare the public hearing open. Is there anyone in the section to our right that would like to come forward to speak on this issue? Is there anyone in the center section that would like to come forward to speak on this issue?
Oh, I have a great idea. Oh, you drunk Baptist?
Would you like to come forward and speak, Mr. Foster?
I won't take that anymore.
Thank you. Is there anyone in the section to our left that would like to speak on this issue? Yes, sir. Mr. Dixon. Please come forward to the podium, state your name and your address for the record.
So, my name is Phil Dixon. I live at five oh seven Williamsboro Street. And, uh, like the Reverend said earlier on, I love living in this town, I love calling it home. I'm new. And so, I'm, in case, in my business, we turn around and we say, "Tell them what you're gonna tell them. Tell them and tell them what you told them." So, I'm gonna tell you what I'm gonna tell you, and that's, I'm in a hundred percent support. If that doesn't, uh, um, if that doesn't come across clearly, then I'll summarize it at the end. I think you, you, in terms of changing the zoning, I think you could ask a number of questions. One is, is it gonna be good for the community? Is it going to increase the pulse and energy of this town? And by the way, I remind you that the vision says, "Our historic vibrant town." What's it gonna do to the immediate environment? What's it gonna do for the economy, both the immediate economy and the surrounding economy? How profitable will it be? Because you don't want something profitable that's gonna become a, a white elephant in five years' time. And how well will it be run? So, you're gonna ask, ask all these questions, uh, behind the, are we gonna change the zoning or not? And if you take a look on, on, um, Google and ask, "What has happened elsewhere?" I, I sp- most of you who know me, I do a lot of research. I couldn't find one occasion where putting a distillery in had actually gone south. So, I, um, can't, just can't find it. So, I've looked hard. And just in summary, I'd like to, um, so there was a session last Saturday afternoon, talking about the new owners of, or the new renters of the Orpheum. And Maire Sargent summarized it at the very end. And she said, "Isn't it great that we now have?" And she made a list of things. And I just think it'd be wonderful if at the end of that list, we could add "distillery." Thank you.
Thank you very much. Is there anyone else from this section that would like to come forward? And speak on this issue? Okay. Last call. Would anyone like to come forward from anywhere in this room to speak on this issue? All right then. I declare the public hearing closed. And we move forward to item five A, which is to consider amending the zoning ordinance to include the definition of a craft distillery and amend the table of permitted uses to allow a craft distillery in the B-one zoning district. The ordinance amendments would define craft distilleries and allow small distillery productions of less than twenty-five thousand gallons a year in the B-one zoning district as a permitted use. The current zoning ordinance allows distilleries in the industrial one, industrial two, industrial three, and business three zoning districts. In the attached documents, you'll see where distilleries are located in the downtown business district of small towns in North Carolina. And those are all included in attachment five A. The recommendation is from not only the staff, but the planning board to recommend amending the zoning ordinance for defining a craft distillery and allow it as a permitted use in the B-one zoning district and that the use is compatible with the comprehensive plan. What is the pleasure of the board?
Motion.
Motion by Commissioner Woodlock. Any discussions? All in favor of the motion, signal so by saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed, like sign? That motion carries unanimously. Thank you very much. Item six, public hearing to receive citizen input on a rezoning request from Eddie Cottle to rezone eight acres of land from R-A to B-two. And you have support, Commissioner's support information in attachment six that shows his request for this motion. I now declare the public hearing open. Is there anyone from the section to our right that would like to come forward to speak on this issue? Is there anyone from the center section that would like to come forward to speak on this issue? Is there anyone from the section to our left that would like to come forward? Yes, please, come forward, state your name and your address and your purpose for the record.
My name is Eddie Cottle, and I live at forty-six fifteen Highway ninety-six South, just outside of Oxford. I should say, I sleep there, I spend six of my days a week, uh, at ten ten Linden Avenue, where my car dealership is. Some of you are good patrons, and I appreciate that. Just here tonight to ask that you, um, approve this rezoning so that we can bring some businesses to Oxford on this parcel right here next to Walmart, right across the street from Walmart. Maybe we can get to ten thousand people before twenty sixty. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to come forward to speak on this issue? And members, since Mr. Cottle did come forward, or do any of you all have any questions for him? Okay. I now declare the public hearing closed. We proceed with the item to consider approving the rezoning request from Eddie Cottle to rezone eight acres of land from residential agricultural to business two. Mr. Cottle rezoned the front portion of the property approximately a year ago and has since recombined an additional eight acres. The purpose of the rezoning is for the entire property to have a highway business zoning and to make it more marketable for future development. Staff recommends approving the rezoning of Mr. Cottle's eight acres of land from R-A to B-two. What is the pleasure of the board?
Motion.
Okay, we have a concomitant motion, was that from three, or was it Commissioner Bridges? Fields, and okay, down on that end. Any discussion? Oh, also you as well? Everybody spoke at the same time. Okay, any discussion? All in favor of the motion, signal so by saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed, like sign? Mr. Cottle, that motion carries unanimously. Thank you very much for coming out tonight. Okay, we move forward to new business. And we have item seven, which is to consider rewarding the twenty-nineteen concessionaire contract for Oxford Park Athletic Complex to Farmer John's Ice Cream, Robert Glover. Parks and Rec Department accepted informal bids for the exclusive license to provide concessions for Oxford Athletic Park for the twenty-nineteen athletic season. The bids were advertised in both the Oxford Public Ledger and the Madison Dispatch. Bids were received in the city clerk's office and were opened by the city clerk and the Parks and Recreation Director on Friday, February fifteenth, twenty-nineteen, at twelve P.M. The city received one bid from Farmer John's Ice Cream and Robert Glover. Mr. Glover submitted a bid of twenty-one percent of the gross sales. Mr. Glover received the contract for the twenty-eighteen athletic season. With the same bid percentage, there were no issues with the service that he provided the city. You have support information in attachment seven. The recommendation by staff is to award the contract to Robert Glover, doing business as Farmer John's Ice Cream for the twenty-nineteen season, and authorize the city manager to sign the contract on behalf of the city of Oxford. What is the pleasure of the board?
Motion.
Motion, that was Commissioner Bridges? Any discussion?
Madam Mayor, uh, twenty-one percent of the total gross sales. I was just wondering, uh, in the prior years, like, for instance, last year, how much, uh, revenue was generated by that concession stand?
Do we, is the Recreation Director is right there, she's back from being out of town, yes?
I'm sorry.
I'll see if I can look it up here real quick.
Oh, we can move on and he can get it to me, unless the audience wants to know.
Concessions. Year-to-date, of course, this, you know, started July first.
Okay.
So, uh, eighty-six hundred ninety-one dollars and twenty-six cents to date.
Okay, well, that's, and that's through, that's through March?
That is, uh, at the end of February.
Right, okay.
Thank you.
Excellent. Any other questions?
I know I made the motion before, but I do have a question.
Yeah, you're allowed to.
And, and I'm just curious as to why only one, I mean, is there no competition?
No. With you and I in.
Yes, absolutely.
And we actually put it in the Butner.
You can tell them why.
So, I apologize, um, for that not being used after the word. But it's just, it's a hard business. I mean, it's, it lets you running a food truck or run concessions. It's not something that you really wanna get into, you're not gonna make a lot of money. Um, it's more of a service that we provide for the participants in the tournament. Um, and so, we're actually very glad that he's willing to continue doing it. So, there was one other company that had done it a couple of years ago. Um, and they're actually doing that now in Butner. So, and it's tough to have multiple sites when you're just one or two persons.
So, we might be making as much money or more than he is?
Well, he, he is making a little bit more than that, but he is also putting a lot into it, so.
Okay, great, thank you. Yes, Commissioner Woodlock?
Are people allowed to bring things in the gate, such as snacks and, and food, that they bring from home? Or they, is it like going to, uh, the Durham Bulls Park and you can't bring anything?
Right, um, teens can bring in a teen cooler. Uh, some people want them to be able to have Gatorade and things like that in their dugout with them. Um, and, but otherwise, you can't bring five.
Thank you.
Okay, any other questions? Okay, all in favor of Commissioner Bridges' motion, signal so by saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed, like sign? That motion carries. Item eight, consider accepting a certificate of sufficiency for the petition of voluntary contiguous annexation for plus or minus three acres of land adjacent to the Hardees property located on Industry Drive. And consider adopting a resolution calling for an annexation public hearing to be held in conjunction with the April ninth regular session if the board desires to move forward with the annexation. James Mueller, chairman of the Board of Lace Lastics, is petitioning the city for contiguous annexation for plus or minus three acres of land adjacent to the Hardees property located on Industry Drive. The purpose of requesting annexation is to connect to the city's utilities for future development. The requested annexation is contiguous to the city limits. The proposed development is for a medical office. The request is required for connecting to the city's water and sewer. All text amendments, rezoning, and special use application have been approved. In order to connect to the city water and sewer, the policy requires petitioning for annexation. The city clerk and the city attorney confirmed annexation boundaries and applicant signatures. The board can vote to accept a certificate of sufficiency and proceed with setting a public hearing for annexation during the April ninth regular session or deny the petition. Following the public hearing and at the same meeting, the board can vote to annex the property if it chooses. The recommendation from staff is to accept the certificate of sufficiency for the petition of voluntary contiguous annexation by James Mueller, chairman of the Board of Lace Lastics, and adopt a resolution calling for an annexation public hearing in conjunction with the April ninth regular session. What is the pleasure of the board?
Madam Mayor, before y'all, before y'all bet on it, they have submitted a, a new legal description.
That's the new one.
This one is?
Yeah.
Okay, all right.
Okay, thank you. The motion was from Commissioner Bullock. Okay. Any discussion on the motion? All in favor of accepting the certificate of sufficiency for petition of voluntary contiguous annexation by James Mueller, signal so by saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed, like sign? That motion carries. Item nine, consider appointing George Summers to the planning board. Mr. Summers expressed an interest several years ago in serving on the planning board, and due to the recent resignation of Betty Mosley, a vacancy has occurred. Mr. Mrs. Mosley's term will expire in June of twenty-nineteen. Mr. Summers is currently a member of the Appearance Committee and is very interested in continuing to see Oxford grow. And you have his application for the planning board in your attachment nine. The recommendation from staff is to appoint Mr. Summers to fill the unexpired term of Betty Mosley. What is the pleasure of the board?
Motion to appoint Mr. Summers.
Motion by Commissioner Curran, any discussion? All in favor, signal so by saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed, like sign? That motion carries. Item ten, consider adopting a resolution for twenty-seventeen local water supply plan. The Division of Water Resources notified the city in February that the twenty-seventeen local water supply plans require a resolution by the board for approval. And you have that plan. Part of it is in attachment ten, but the plan is actually behind the copper sheet for attachment eleven. So, it'll vary the last one, two, three, four pages of your agenda. And the recommendation, of course, is that the board adopt a resolution to approve the twenty-seventeen local water supply plan. What is the pleasure of the board?
Motion.
Was that Commissioner Bullock? Okay, any discussion? I do have a couple of questions because, um, I also, we have our engineer, Amy Ratliff, in the room, notice that the population estimates, um, were much slower that now that we've had an uptick, in, in, uh, we've grown one point one percent in the past year and expect the population to grow with new developments. There've been several applications in the planning office. So, given that the predictions at the time of the original plan, what is the requirement by the state for, uh, um, I guess, updating it with new information?
If, if you all will note, this is the twenty-seventeen, in the, you know, twenty-seventeen, most of the uptick that we've seen has occurred in twenty-eighteen.
Right.
And so, that will be reflected in twenty-eighteen. This is updated yearly, it's only required that the board adopted every four or five years.
Okay.
And so, and they actually were updating the laws in twenty-eighteen yearly. So, in twenty-seventeen, that reflects the growth that was occurring in that.
Sure. Okay, excellent. So, we'll be doing another one and take new information into account. I also saw in the plan that, uh, it discussed, um, water, asked about water conservation measures and said that we had a forty-four gallon per day, per capita use. And so, is this considered high?
I would have to look into that. I don't think, I think that's considered about a network, so I can look into it and, uh, and find out if it's, that it's automatically generated by their reporting system based on the amount of water.
Okay. So, it might be just that they automatically ask that question of everyone and it isn't that we, um, have an unusually high amount of water use.
Correct, that's an auto fill, that's based on the number of people.
Okay, great. Thank you very much. Those are my questions. Any other questions? All in favor of adopting the resolution for the twenty-seventeen local water supply plan? Signal so by saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed, like sign? That motion carries. Item eleven, consider approving a budget amendment for the wastewater treatment plan headworks repairs. During Tropical Storm Michael, the volume of water that the wastewater treatment plan received caused an unanticipated failure of the grit collector and bar screen headwork systems. And it has been down since October twelfth. The city filed an insurance claim for this damage, and it was approved. The proposed budget amendment would be that the proceeds from insurance, uh, in the... zero-three-zero dash three-eight-four-zero dash three-eight-four-zero-zero-one dash eight-five, into the wastewater treatment plan, equipment, maintenance, and repair line items, so that we take proceeds from the insurance line item and put them into the equipment, maintenance, and repairs line item. The quotes for the work in the insurance claim amount were based on the best information available. It is possible this amount could change when the actual repairs are being completed, and you do have that support information in attachment eleven. Recommendation from staff is to approve the budget amendment in the amount of ninety-three thousand, six-hundred-and-ninety-three dollars from the proceeds from insurance into the wastewater treatment, equipment, and maintenance and repairs line item. What is the pleasure of the board?
Motion.
Motion by Commissioner Field, any discussion?
Just have a question, you know, and I don't know if you were here, Amy, but Larry had earlier brought up the fact that the headworks had been down for, I think he said six months, but it sounds like more, closer to five months. I was just wondering, is, what was the problem with us getting this done earlier?
Due to the devastation that occurred, that the, due to the devastation that occurred at the coast, contractors were closing their construction plans that were absolutely non-fungible, and it was challenging, challenging to get any contractors to even provide a site to do work while they were still trying to get things sorted out closer to the coast. As we've been able to get the quotes, again, to get the work through, to deal with the insurance questions, we have gotten that quote scheduled to move forward, but the biggest issue was they were, the contractors were eligible to bid on projects that were more dire needed than ours.
Did our plants suffer any deleterious effects as a consequence?
We were still able to maintain our progress.
Okay, excellent, thank you. Any other questions? Okay, all in favor, signal so by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, like sign? That motion carries unanimously. We move forward to the consent agenda, which is to accept the February finance report by our finance director, Hakang, and to approve the February fourth and February twelfth meeting minutes. What is the pleasure of the board?
Motion.
That was Commissioner Bullock. Any discussion? All in favor of the motion, signal so by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, like sign? That motion carries unanimously. With that, we move forward to board member comments. Anything from Commissioner Woodlock? And Commissioner Bullock? Okay, Commissioner Field, you arrived in time, do you have anything that you would like to add tonight?
No.
Okay, Mr. Bridges?
Uh, no. I mean, I don't.
Are you sure?
The only thing I wanted to say, I'm real excited about what's happening with our airport, one thing. You know, I'm glad that those new managers came in and spoke with us, and I do hope that we will address the issue of the crosswalk in front of the courthouse. Even if you do something temporary quickly, you know what I mean, put a sign in the middle, because that is a big issue of folks going across that crosswalk. And, and you know, some kind of people will stop, you know, but a lot of times, folks just shoot people. A lot will act on that quickly in terms of something there, so.
Thank you. Mayor Prokhorov?
No, ma'am.
Okay, Commissioner Curran?
No, ma'am.
Commissioner Strickland?
Yes, last, in our agenda meeting, I had requested it be put on the agenda for a closed session, and I've had a lot of people ask me about that and wanting to know what I had in mind, and I think it's only fair that we clarify that. By saying that, I was trying to get an opportunity for this board and the mayor to meet as a group to discuss any issues that we had with one another. Unfortunately, the North Carolina General Statute does not authorize us to do that. It's not like that we would go into closed session to make any agreements to do anything that affected the citizens of Oxford. It was just to have an understanding between us and get to know one another, because to be honest with you, we really don't know one another, and we don't have that opportunity. Now, there's some commissioners on this board that I know very well, because I go to Sunday school, and I go to church with them, and I see them, and we're neighbors, but by and large, and Commissioner Harris had mentioned this a year or so ago, about just get together and go out to dinner, and it's so unfortunate that the law don't allow that. Can you imagine being in a group where you're so restricted, you just can't meet and just talk about family or friends, or just have a dinner without, you know, making it in public? You have to meet in public, and it's just sad that that's the way things are, but to say that we don't have issues amongst ourselves would be a complete lie.
Why don't you meet in public?
Because we do, and I don't have a problem with it, Mr. McCoy. I really don't have a problem with it. But the thing about it is, it could get very, it could get very ugly, and I don't want to see that happen, but I just think the public needs to know what I had in mind and how sad it is that you can't do anything like that. It would be different if we were just meeting to do something about the, about the welfare of the citizens of Oxford, it's not, it's not about that, really. And you can, if you relate back to a couple of years ago, you know, we had some very contentious meetings here, where there was postcards sent out, things like that that happened, and, and really, the public, I mean, we're supposed to be transparent, but the public really don't know a lot of things that goes on. You really don't. Now, whether it was designed that way by our forefathers, I don't know, but I just think it's kind of sad. So, I just want to make that point clear to everybody. I have nothing to hide, and if you know me well enough, you'll know, all you got to do is ask me, and I'll tell you what's on my mind. And if they get to the point where I can't do that, then I don't belong here. And that's all, ma'am.
Okay, thank you very much. Mr. Manager, anything you'd like to say?
No, no, I just want to say thank you to all the board members and my staff for their participation in the retreat that we had the week before last. I think it went very well, and I appreciate everyone's involvement in helping us plan and prepare for not only the budget process that has commenced, but setting our plate of work, so to speak, our program of work for this year. So, thank you for that. Also was encouraged today by being at the groundbreaking ceremony for the new Law Enforcement Center. Whoever picked the first dry day since they started construction, congratulations. I took an extra pair of shoes, I think it'll be a mud hole. But it was, it shows the progress that is taking place, and it's going to be a very nice facility for everyone that has to frequent there and be there and work there. Other than that, we do have the rodeo, the food truck rodeo, and five K or whatever it is this weekend, it's been expanded. Mary's not here today, witnessed this evening to explain that to the board, but it is an expanded event. I think it's being held longer and more into the evening on Saturday than it had been in the past years, so it's going to be an expanded event. So, come out to that. I think Saturday's supposed to be dry as well, and in the sixties, so there'll be a lot of food trucks uptown. Come on out.
Sorry, I can speak a little bit to the expansion, so they have, you know, fun run, and I think there's a mile family fun walk run, and then a five K and fun run, and then their five K time and ten K time. There's also, you can pay extra to be part of the V I P tent and get all kinds of swag, and then their food truck rodeo goes from four to seven, but then there's also after-party at Tobacco Wood Brewery and additional things going on there, so I think that's the expansion. I know Commissioner Bridges wants to say something, and I want to, but Mr. Turney, anything else you'd like to add?
No, ma'am.
Okay, and I would like to just reiterate your comments about the retreat. For those of you in the audience, the manager and the staff worked tremendously hard. I know that Cindy Bowen and Rebecca Webster were a big part of that, but the staff reports were engaging and interesting, and we really appreciated the time that everybody put into it, and I certainly appreciated the time from the, each of you up here behind the dais that worked together to discuss strategies for the future and to work with the manager, and so I really appreciate all the energy that went into that. Commissioner Bridges?
Yeah, and, and I, and the manager really took care of it, because I was going to kind of respond to Commissioner Strickland's comments about the relationship between board members. We just had a retreat, and, and you know, I thought that was good, and I, and I think that that probably is a more appropriate environment or circumstance to talk about things in terms of how we get along as a board, although I don't think it's necessary for us to socialize together or go to the same events for us to be effective commissioners. I mean, you know, I don't dislike you, Commissioner Strickland, but, you know, bottom line is, we don't always agree on issues, and that's not a bad thing. I mean, just because we have different views doesn't mean that we're, you know, we can't function, but I think we, as commissioners, have to be responsible for what we say and do from this place, this public place. I have said things that I wish I could take back, sitting here at this seat, but I take responsibility for what I say and what I do, and if I don't do it right, I got to be responsible for myself. I can't depend on you to cover me. We have to be responsible as commissioners in terms of what we do and say in this position.
I agree with that, I'm responsible for everything I do and say, and I think that it takes a lot of courage to put yourself out there and, and back it up. So, I, I agree with you there, and no, we don't have to have be buddy buddy to do that, but you know, the amazing thing about it, Mr. Bridges, is regardless of the relationship on the board, we have gotten things done. And we're doing things, and to be there at that dedication ceremony today at the Public Safety Center, I was very proud, because that was made possible by the City of Oxford. We got the water, and we got the sewer.
There you have it. And with that, I want to thank everybody for being here tonight, if you give a motion to adjourn.
Yes, Lord.
Absolutely.
It was a nice, short meeting, really.
Yes, Lord.
One hour.
Nothing to need to.
It was only one hour.
I know, but y'all be the ones that did.
We hang out fifteen minutes, I'll sleep.
But, but I actually.
Call me tech, let me turn my phone back on so I don't miss.
I wanted to ask them that, you know, I always think about talking about working with.
Those folks that ask, have the city want their property.
This is my.
Yes, sir. We just need to talk sometime, maybe we can talk a little bit softer.
Today.
That's going to be tough.